All right, great. Good evening and welcome to the Hanson Select Board meeting of October 10th, 2023. This meeting is being recorded by Whitman-Hanson Community Access Television. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right, Mrs. Green, you know the drill.
I do.
We are looking for citizens at large to become members of the following committees: The Board of Health, Bylaw Committee, Cable and Internet Committee, Community Preservation Committee, Capital Improvement Committee, Cultural Council, Energy Committee, Historical Commission, Master Plan Steering Subcommittee, Memorial Day and Patriotic Observance Committee, Nathaniel Thomas Mill Committee, Recreation Committee, the Zoning Board of Appeals. Volunteer applications may be found on the website, www.hansonma.gov, or by calling the Select Board's office at 781-293-2131. I need to say something about that.
Can we add McQuan onto this, too? I don't know.
Oh, the McQuan Reuse Committee.
Yeah.
Took it off because you were not going to, you were going to focus on the principles until we got some more movement going forward?
Well, we just had some volunteer.
Yeah, we just had, a couple people are like volunteering and coming forward, so.
But that volunteer application is not obvious, particularly if you are on, if you're not on a desktop. If you're on a phone, it's really hard to find it. It's way down the bottom, it's not, it doesn't show up well. So, people need, I don't know what we can do about making that a little bit more accessible for people to actually find it.
Can you talk to our IT department?
The title of it is, the title of it doesn't lead you to believe that that's what you're filling out. It looks like an employment application.
Okay, we could do that. It's not, it's definitely not intuitive, because I always have to explain to people, when people want to apply, like, they're ready to apply, they're like, "I can't find it." And like, that kind of defeats the purpose, it's difficult to get people, and now we're making it difficult for them to sign up.
Yes, no, we can, we can address that.
Okay. Applications for the Hanson Community Christmas are now available at Town Hall and the library. If you are seeking assistance this holiday season, the application needs to be completed and mailed no later than Saturday, November 25th, 2023. You must include proof of Hanson residency to apply. Applications missing the information will not be considered. The annual Holiday Festival will take place on the town hall on Saturday, December 2nd, 2023, at 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Upcoming meetings, the Strategic Planning Session is October 17th, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. and I believe we're discussing.
Yeah, we're discussing whether we're going to need something on the 31st of October.
The Select Board meeting on October 31st, 2023.
It's a hot holiday, I mean, really, people.
Halloween is not the right time to be holding meetings.
No, I agree. So, I'm sure Joe wants to be with his little people, and I just want to see other little guys come into my house, so, anyway.
But we don't have anybody, so.
As far as the updates, the announcements, I did want to mention that I had an opportunity very briefly to speak to Steve Amico, who's part of the annual Holiday Festival. We thank all those guys for their tireless work in bringing what is one of the most favored little holiday traditions to Hanson. He informed me that there will not be fireworks this year unless there's some kind of miracle that happens, because it's $5,500 for the fireworks, and they just don't have the money. So, I just am mentioning this because if you are interested, if people are interested, they can reach out to the annual, you know, to the Holiday Festival Committee, Amanda Hawk, or Steve Amico, or Bob Hayes, or Charlie Barons, and if I'm missing people, I'm sorry, but, you know, one of those guys, and let them know that you'd be interested in donating. And it's not a town committee per se, but it definitely, it's one of my favorite holiday traditions, I'll tell you. They're still going to have it, and it's still going to be everything except for the fireworks, which is still wonderful, but it's just missing the fireworks, so. All right, we've got a, yeah, it's not a huge agenda, I think we can whip through this fairly quickly, that's my intention this evening. So, we've got in our packet a notice for the vacancy of Board of Registars from our town clerk, Mary Foley has resigned, and I don't remember, did we accept her resignation?
To resign.
Okay, because that, was that on here? No. All right, so we, so I will entertain a motion to accept the resignation of Mary Foley.
So moved with regret.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? And we've got Nancy Brown, who has applied to replace Mary Foley on the Board of Register, so I'll entertain a motion to appoint Nancy Brown.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All right, so far, so good. MMA Healy-Driscoll Administration Discussion. Ms. Green, this was the item where, I think you guys probably all got emails, I did, or I don't know, I'm not sure about them, but from the Healy-Driscoll Administration, they're seeking feedback from towns on what it is that we need them to do. And of course, I need them to give us more money for schools and infrastructure. I'm sure other towns might be asking for other things, but I do feel like that would be the consistent message across towns. So I thought we should discuss it for the purposes of having Ms. Green structure an email on our behalf to the Healy-Driscoll Administration. And I also thought maybe, Ms. Green, you could give us an update on your personal interaction with Lieutenant Governor Driscoll.
So, I was fortunate enough, I attended a meeting session with, was hosted by the Lieutenant Governor. She actually came to the Bridgewater State University campus, and it was a very small group that was invited, it was probably about 25 of us. It was, it was put together by the Collins Center, and what we did was, they put together a number of different areas that impact municipalities as far as the laws and what we're required to do. And we focused on certain areas that would, that we would like to see this administration work on to either maybe changing the laws, updating them, revising them to make things easier for the municipalities. She was, she sat and listened to all of that, all the information that we had, what our frustrations are, our impacts, the roadblocks, the challenges that we faced. The administration and the governor are very interested in being partners with municipalities. Some of the top items that came up were, of course, funding for schools, infrastructure, procurement laws, the, something that Hanson has not faced, but the migrant crisis that other towns are facing, that has come up.
How did, did that come up in, "You've got mandates, but you're not giving us money for the mandates"?
Yes, the mandates, yes. That definitely was a source, especially surrounding schools, transportation, things like that. So, they basically are taking all that feedback back to the administration, they're going to look at these and see what they can do to work better with the municipalities. So they're reaching out now to all municipalities, to select boards, things like that, to get feedback and get other areas that we would like them to focus on.
All right, so do you guys agree that schools and infrastructure are like, are two key things that we'd like to see them give us, basically give us money? That's what we need, is, is, you know, money. And I can't put enough emphasis on the school. Because, you know, we've got all these, you know, the way school looks has changed dramatically in terms of, you know, the emotional support components and the number of special needs children and all of that, and it's like a runaway train in terms of funding. And there's just no way that a small town like us, that's mostly reliant on homeowners for, you know, for our tax base, can keep up with it. It's growing like exponentially. So, that, I, so, is there anything else that people want to ask them for? I just thought it would be a good exercise for us to, like, you know.
Well, I think that we need to look at both of infrastructure and the schools.
Okay.
Because there's a lot of infrastructure that's, needs help.
Oh, yeah, 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 I mean, I, no, I agree, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say one to, one to the exclusion of the other, yeah, definitely. I really was thinking roads, because mostly, because I was thinking about Jamison at town meeting, having to get up and talk about putting the sealant, sealant on, and if I'm not using the right term, you'll have to forgive me.
It is, yes, it's the crack, crack sealant.
And, you know, and the fact that, you know, we've gotten the state to do some work, but, you know, Jamison has said, like, it's, it's like a ticking time bomb waiting to go off, you know, and at some point, you know, it will start heaving, and then it will be a matter of, do we have the money to do it, and then we'll have to reprioritize things. And it seems to me like there must be a better way to do it, if you could be a little bit more proactive, but of course, we don't have the money to do that, so we're like gerbils on a wheel. So, is there anything else? Infrastructure and school, anything else that you guys want to?
Yeah, I think that we need to have them, if they're willing to listen to it, they, we have a whole bunch of people that are going to look at regional agreements and things like that, and if they're going to listen to us, we, I want them to look at the way in which they structure regional agreements to have a benefit everybody, not just one town.
Yep.
And then another piece is that we talk about kids a lot, we have a lot of elderly that are on fixed incomes, and our elder services and elder affairs needs a lot more money and a lot more attention.
I agree with that.
So, I think we got to look at both ends of the life spectrum.
Health and Human Services was also another focus topic as well. What helps is that we have some specific examples of what small municipalities face. For instance, the school transportation, when I brought that up and gave them the figure, she was just like blown away by, you know, what comes our way and challenges we face. So, that was helpful for them.
If I'm not incorrect, I think the deadline is fairly, like.
Twenty, October.
Yeah, okay.
Next Friday.
All right, so do you think you might have something that we could take a look at by next, next week?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, all right, so that we can get it out and get it in there by the deadline. Mr. Keel, anything?
Fireworks, just kidding.
I like your thought process, not to be confused, not to be confused with the fireworks site, but yes.
Must be confused.
Yes. Okay, great. Whitman-Hanson Regional School District School Committee Borrowing Discussion. This is relevant to the middle school. We can vote to not support it, we can vote to support it, we can remain neutral since it's not going to affect our tax base, and it is not in our town. What would the board like to do?
Make a motion that we defer this to, back to the school committee.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so, is that a second? Okay, great. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor? All right, fantastic. Ms. Green, moving on to surplus furniture at the Town of Hanson Library.
Okay, so the library has some bookshelves available. They offered it to, some of the bookshelves that they have to other departments that were able to use them and accept them, and they still, they have some left over, so they would like the Select Board to please declare the surplus, so maybe that they could put them on, out to an auction and maybe receive some funds for them.
Could you possibly use these in lieu of our filing cabinet?
No, just joking, I'm just joking. That would have to give us less room.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to declare this as surplus.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
All right, great. And we've got an, a Thomas Rafi Jr., who currently, I believe, is on conservation with you, Ed, right?
Yes, Tom Rafi, yeah.
So we've got an application from him to join the Master Plan Steering Committee. I will entertain a motion to appoint him.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Great. And we have an appoint, we have an application from Jean Dean to join the McQuan School.
Before, wait, has someone spoken to these people about this?
Thomas is already, no, oh, well, I think, yes, the, he's already, he's on conservation, and I think he kind of wanted to be the conservation representative, if you will, for.
Yeah, no, I trust that, I'm just, for the sake of consistency in all these things.
Well, our consistency was always that if somebody was an existing member of a committee, that we don't need to meet them again, and if they're complying for like another committee. So with Thomas, I'm not concerned, but this may come into place with Jean. I think we're being consistent with him. Jean Dean, I have not spoken to Jean, has anybody spoken with Jean?
So, Jean is actually a member of the Whitman-Hanson Dollars for Scholars, so I know her through that connection.
Okay.
So, just so I know that she volunteers her time, very dedicated, I think she'd be a good, she'd be a good addition to the McQuan School Reuse Committee. She does have children in the school, in the school system.
Do you guys want to meet her, or?
You, you matter, you.
Yeah, yeah, I've worked with her through the Dollars for Scholars.
Okay.
Any disclosures or anything that you could?
Not that I'm aware of, I will ask her if she has any concerns about any conflicts, but.
Well, she signed saying she didn't, but, yeah. Is that new? I don't remember that little blurb being on there.
Digitally signed.
Yeah, the digitally signed, yeah. Okay, I will entertain a motion to appoint Jean Dean to the McQuan School Reuse Committee.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All right, great. And this brings us to the, discuss the Vitolo Bill, A Sign on Leonard in Support of Legislation of Affordable Electrical Aggregation Program. Ms. Green.
All right, so, actually, there's been an update on that. So, the support letter that the legislators were looking for was needed by last week. However, there will be a second letter that's coming out that will address the same issues, but they will be asking for like the Department of Public Utilities rather than the legislation. So, Rachel Ferdinand, who's with Good Energy, will be joining us next meeting by Zoom to.
Not on the 17th, right?
Yes, on the 17th.
Oh, no.
No?
No, we don't, we don't, we don't, we're going to be doing the strategic planning session.
Okay, okay.
I really don't want a lot of, like, unless there's something bare bones that has to get done next week, I just want it to be strategic.
Okay, so we can move her out to the next meeting then, yeah.
And what is the date that their, the deadline is going to be?
Well, it hasn't come out yet.
Okay.
So that's, we've got some time on that second one.
Okay, all right, great. Okay, so, took care of that. Then, October 2023, Special Town Meeting Recap and Next Steps. I mentioned to, I emailed each of you individually, Ms. McDowell, Ms. Sprague, and Ms. Green, as well as our town council, our town moderator, our town clerk, our town accountant, and the Chair of FinCom, to thank everybody for all of their hard work. I thought it went extremely smoothly. I felt that we were not rushed towards the end in making hasty decisions, things were done in an orderly fashion, so let's do it again for the May Town Meeting. And which I know is a Herculean task, because we're going to probably have to tell people it was due last week in order to make the, you know, deadlines, but, I joke, but not really. So, think about what that timeline might need to look like, and maybe at our next meeting, full meeting in October, let's talk about that, okay? But I think it did go very well. Was there any feedback you guys had, or?
I thought it was great. I'm thinking about May, though, because another thing I want to, I'd like to add to the letter that we were just talking about to the governors, you know, I really feel like we're going to be coming up against a perfect storm of public safety departments versus the school.
Yep.
And there's not going to be enough money to go around, and I really don't want to get into a who is more important and which budget line item is more important than next. And we constantly have our first responders sacrificing themselves and making dedications so that they, the town can kind of stay afloat, and I just don't want that to be a repeat every two years, three years, whatever it is. So we can, just to kind of loop this back in, and we, from now until six months from now in May, we got a lot of work to do budget-wise, so that we don't have to have really difficult conversations. And if this letter is an opportunity within the next 10 days to kind of lay out that small towns like ours that don't have a lot of commercial taxes or taxation, we're always putting our neighbors up against each other, and that's not the town that we want, and that's not what I would think the governor would want for a town like ours. So, if we can wrap that into it, I'd appreciate it.
I agree, and similarly, I know, I know we're talking about the October Town Meeting, but I think, you know, we all know that there's a cliff that we're about to fall off of if we don't have an override. I don't know what that override looks like, maybe there'll be some rabbit pulled out of a hat, I don't know. You know, I would, did, were you able to get what the final number was on the free cash from Eric after that meeting?
Yes. So, basically, we started out with $2,267,948. The amount that was authorized and adopted at town meeting was $781,514.44. So our free cash balance is $1,486,433.56.
Okay, that's damn good. It's still not going to be enough, but it's damn good. That's great, and I'm sorry, Lily, if you're watching, I didn't mean to swear. Okay, so, so that's good, it will, and I'm hoping that Eric can continue to look for funds that were voted to be used in a particular way, that have not yet been used and are not likely to ever be used. Also, for any reimbursements on grants that we gave, where we were fronting the money, but were going to be paid back by the state, so we can bolster that number up a little bit. And again, even, even though that is helpful and wonderful, the train that we are on is moving at a pace that it is going to jump the track. So, I'm not, I'm typically very much a glass, you know, half-full gal, but I'm also a realist and a pragmatic person, so I can see this like it's a bullet train coming right at us. And to Joe's point, I don't, I don't plan on living through what we went through the last time that we got, we got this tight. I'm just, I'm not, I'm not planning on doing that. So we'll, we'll talk about that further. I, I loved, I really do think that Sean presenting and doing the articles just moves, makes it move a lot quicker, so I thought that went really well. And I, I thought you were really on your game, Ms. Green, you were able to respond to questions. I know there was some question about the legality of the planner salary issue, which we had a, a citizen after the meeting, who got up at the meeting and voiced their concern, and after the meeting, again, questioned the legality of it. But I want to assure everybody that we did go back to our town council, who we pay to be our town council, and had them take a look at it, and they feel comfortable that we are on solid legal footing, and that we did not do anything inappropriate, so.
And our town accountant was in agreement as well.
Yes, yep, yep, good point. Anything else, anybody wanted to add on that? Okay, all right, okay, strategic planning update. So, at our last strategic planning update, we focused on the McQuan School property, and we got a lot of great feedback, and we're definitely going to keep having to loop in a lot of the same people that were at that meeting. However, I don't want to be a one-trick pony, and we've got a lot of other things that we need, a lot of other nuts we've got to crack. So, at that, at the next meeting, I was thinking we should pivot a little bit and talk about some of our, the other concerns that we had. Now, one of them, that I think we've made a fair amount of progress on, but of course, we're never going to make enough progress, is communication. And it was one of the things that came up as a concern, both internally, you know, within Town Hall and with our employees, and then externally, how are we telling people about all the good work that people are doing at Town Hall and all our other Town Hall employees? And when I say Town Hall, I really mean town employees, but I just don't want people to get insulted. So, I think that that would be a good tact, and I would very much appreciate you and Mr. DeFrayis updating us on grants. We were out of, like, I think that this is a good opportunity for you and Mr. DeFrayis to talk about grants and progress that you've made. And then, because this is, a lot of these folks, you know, are like not employees, they're committee heads, and they may not really know about some of the updates that we're getting or other committees are getting. And this is the one time that we've got where we're all together, where we can all make sure that we've all got the same basic foundational information. So, going forward, I would like that to be the approach that you and Mr. DeFrayis take, if the rest of the board agrees. And then, I, what do you guys think about trying to tackle the communication issue?
I will not be there.
I know you won't, but you can still have an opinion. I, you know, I'd like to talk about the website update, the phone update, and I'd like to get people's ideas for, you know, the fact that you've been doing the monthly newsletter, and then get other people's ideas for how, you know, what can we all do to improve communication? Is there anything else? We could break out into two groups, or even more, it doesn't have to be just communications. Is there anything else people would like to see this brain bank of people, and I mean that sincerely, talking about? Is this, should we talk about light control? Is that controversial? I don't know. You know, like, what is, what is the, what is a riddle that we need to try to solve as a town, that we've got this unique opportunity with all of these different people with different skills and disciplines and everything, and ideas, that we can have a good conversation and try to, you know, like, reach a good decision about?
Tracting business somehow, and I know, it's been going on forever and ever and ever.
It has.
What's, what is, I mean, this is off the cuff, but what is going on down there with that, the development there where Landis' house was? What is going to go in there?
I don't, I mean, all I've heard, based on, you know, Facebook, which is a great source for all information, is Restoration Coffee and then Aura Lash Bar, which is over, that they're going to both relocate, they're going to locate there, and then I don't.
They're going to relocate.
They're going to, Restoration is new.
Oh, no, we don't have a Restoration Coffee, that's new.
Aura is going to relocate and expand, so it's an opportunity for her to build a, she's got a good business, and she's got another, another satellite office in Bridgewater. She's a homegrown, she's from Whitman-Hanson. And, and then I don't know what other leases he's entered into with people, those are the only two that have, like, publicly announced. So, that particular project, the first floor is going to be retail, so he's built one building, he's going to build that other, and it's the, it's going to be the.
Okay, so there was a second building.
Yeah, and they're both going to have retail on the first floor, so, so we've got that going.
Can I ask another question? What is going on at the industrial park?
People keep asking me about Webster Printing, near Webster Printing.
Behind Webster Printing.
Yeah, do we know about that?
27.
You know, I, no, I don't know about that, and I do want to ask about it, because I noticed that there's land clearing going on.
Yeah, I've had a lot of people.
There's a road in there now, there's asphalt, there's a road.
Yeah, I haven't heard of what's going on there, so.
And it is Hanson.
Because we have property in behind there, too, and that's what I'm wondering, what's going in there?
Yeah, could we?
Tony could give an update on some of these projects that are going on, like, not that Tony knows.
Yeah, we can have Tony, we can have Tony come to one of, well, we can have Tony come to one of our next meetings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And at the strategic planning, I'd like to really push for the recreation, it seems like it's not, for, at the beginning of strategic planning, everyone's like, "Oh, let's do it, let's do it," now we can't get people on the.
So what do we want to, so, talk to me about that, like, you stand on it.
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to, to push, you know, the, all the people that are, that we're discussing and saying how much we want to do recreation, there was a big group of people that were saying, "Yeah, we'll do this, we'll do this, we'll do this." And I think we need to get a couple of the people even that were in that group on the, to sign up for it. I know, unfortunately, as we see with everything, is the people that do all these committees are on hundreds of other committees, or on hundreds, lots of other committees.
Sometimes you got to be like, "All right, I just only have so many hours in the day, I'm already on 15 things," you know, like, I'm talking to myself in the mirror right now, but, you know.
But if people can, can reach out to other people that might be interested, I mean, I know there's soccer moms, and there's people that do running, and there's people that do tennis, and, you know, people that are just into recreation, that may want to get involved but don't, that don't listen to these meetings.
That's, that's a good one. Another thing that came up at our strategic planning session, and it's come up for years, is the idea of like a land use summit group, like a representative from. from each of the land use groups, like, so that if you've got a proponent coming who wants to do something, we're not, you know, having them go through the gauntlet, and they've got to, you know, visit each department and go through all these, you know, very painful, you know, hearings. They can sit down with somebody from each of the committees. Now, granted, those people aren't going to make a commitment to that person, but they're going to say, well, you're going to need to pull this, this, this. This is the order of things, you know, on the face...
Are you suggesting another committee?
No, it's not, not really. And it's all, no, it's only for large, like 40E-type projects, like huge projects. You know, I'm not talking like an average homeowner. A lot of other towns around have got it. No, it's, I call it an ad hoc, as needed type of thing. It's not like on an ongoing basis.
Well, it makes sense. But, again, it's the people you're talking about are on a lot of other...
Is this the same as a land, I mean, a land use council is a lawyer. But, are you talking about that type of...
It's sort of like...
To determine, because, for example, that retail and apartment above, that could have fulfilled part of our 40R if we'd have done it the right way.
If we had done it, that's correct.
So, that's what we need to do. We need to have that kind of...
We need to have this cross-pollination and discussions amongst all. And again, I'm not saying anybody's doing anything wrong.
No.
I find it in myself. We get in our swim lanes and...
Well, we didn't know.
No. And, you know, you know better, you do better. So, so, how about, how about land use? We'll look at recreation. I don't know. Do we do a topic that kind of encompasses both of those? That's sort of like, do we need to restructure somehow? Do we need to restructure things? You know, I know I've heard people talk about DPWs.
Yep.
You know, this is a subject that comes up a lot. I know certain people will lose their minds about it, but I'm going to bring it up anyway. And so, are these some of the things that we talk about? You know, a DPW, recreation, are there other things that we should be looking at, like, you know, and saying, you know, maybe it's time for us to revisit how this is structured?
I'm wondering if every strategic planning meeting, not after, not this one, but going forward, should have a subject like DPW, and then that would be a discussion.
That's what I'm trying to say. So, like, do we want to say, our subject this time is light control, what we're going to do with it, what, you know, what we can't do with it, you know? And again, I recognize that I am like lightning rod, like holding the lightning rod.
A lot of the stuff is.
Yeah. But, it needs to be discussed. And I know we've had our discussions, but I would really like to make sure that all of the other various departments and committees and people that have got involvement in it, and even just, you know, average folks have got an ability to understand where we're at, why we're there, and give us some feedback on where we want to go next.
That just brings up one thing in the back of my mind. I hate to go too far on this. I know we want to, but the Strategic Planning Committee is a set group of people that are the average folk, or can an average person...
It's an open meeting. Anybody can come.
It is open.
It is open. But, we're not necessarily, you know, it would be difficult if we suddenly had 15 other people who maybe aren't as up to speed on the different disciplines. The beauty of that strategic planning session is you've got people who are experts in their field.
And every, and a lot of stuff.
And what they do. And they are able to, you know, so, but it's an open meeting. Anybody can attend. It's public.
Very good.
All right. Mr. Weeks, thoughts? Like High Street, do you want to talk about High Street? Do you want input from that group on High Street?
I mean, someday, yeah, but it sounds to me like communications, that, I mean, unless we want to be there for a few days, I think communication is like the topic, if that's what you want to make it.
Yeah.
All these other things, it's just going to prolong a conversation, or dilute the conversation, or create a situation in which we go on tangents, and then have to circle back to the actual thing that...
I'd like to, if you agree, if you guys agree on communication, that's what I'd like to focus on.
To me, there's so many different things you can talk about. It doesn't, just pick one off the top. So, it doesn't matter. I think the High Street stuff one day will make sense. Right now, and there's still too many competing things to, I mean, to go over with stuff like that. I think what we need to do is find something that's, that we can actually deliver on. Because the last thing that the town wants is to watch a whole bunch of people that they're paying good tax money to watch on public access, just to have us talk about stuff that we're not going to be able to, you know, actually carry out. So, I think whatever it is that we do, just like the last meeting that we had, that resulted in what Charlie having the idea of putting a whole bunch of stuff on surplus, which ended up happening.
Yep.
Raising the school and doing, I mean, a lot of stuff came out of the last meeting, right?
That's it.
So, I mean, the idea is, as long as we're doing stuff that we're actually going to, you know, justifiably use taxpayer money for, and they're going to see that the results are coming from it, not just talking, pick a topic.
Okay. But, are you guys okay with communication?
Mm-hmm.
All right. And then, think about, for the next strategic planning session, is that one we want to handle, light control. We need to talk about it, you know? And maybe by then, we'll have the highway survey thing back and...
Right. We still haven't got that information on that yet.
Yeah. So, let me know. Okay. All right. Thanks. I know that was, we went around and bent and back again on that. Anything else on that, Ms. Green? We're confirmed with Ms. Donner?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And you've sent out reminders to everybody? Okay. And I did mention it to Brian from Wilmington Community Access Television, and I don't think he necessarily appreciated that it was going to be next week at Camp Quaney. So, I just want to make sure we're ticking and tying with those guys and letting them know, because they do have to, they have a whole different setup, as you well know, and it's very painful. Okay, great. One-day look at licenses. I will entertain a motion to approve the one-day look at licenses as printed on our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Committee updates. Anything urgent, earth-breaking, earth-shattering, anything crazy?
Nothing earth-shattering. It's just, I made a promise to the butters of High Street that I would let them know every time we had a meeting. So, we have a meeting tomorrow night, 6 o'clock. And we're hopefully going to be going over some stuff with, hopefully, Tony, and you to talk about some grants and all the movements and all these different things. So, for those that want to be a part of that conversation, tomorrow night, here, 6 o'clock.
Okay. And that's, wow, okay. There's a lot of meetings happening tomorrow night, because I think community preservation, economic development, I think people will be arm-wrestling for this room. Okay, so, along those lines, Mr. Weeks, with the McQuon reuse, people keep coming up with things that I know you guys are already planning on doing up at the High Street. So, I'm thinking when we start to get together as the McQuon reuse, I guess we can have Ms. Green and Mr. DeFrayis kind of tell us what you guys are up to. But, it might be, we need to make sure that we're talking to each other, just so that we don't, you know, like, oh, we're going to do a dog park at McQuon. Oh, wait a minute. You're doing it at High Street? Okay. You know, that type of thing?
Yeah. No, the McQuon reuse committee is more than welcome to come to our meetings.
Oh, boy. Okay.
Well, I will say that that has come up on the Facebook discussions.
That's why I'm, that's why I'm saying it. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So, High Street, McQuon, Transfer Station, are you guys meeting Transfer Station Task Force?
Arlene just got sworn in this past week.
Okay.
So, now, we're back to three members, and we should be scheduling something that's on the to-do list.
Okay, great. All right. Any further committee updates? Great. Approve open session minutes from September 26th and October 2nd.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Ms. Green, that brings us to our Town Administrator Report.
Okay. Madam Chair, ladies and members of the board. So, I just wanted to piggyback on Madam Chair's commitments to the team that worked on for the special Town Meeting. We, the Town Administrator's team, worked fabulously on getting the memos out there, getting the articles. The warrant looked fantastic this year. So, again, I just want to thank Lynn and Emily for all of their help with everything, our Town Clerks, Charlie Baker, everybody put in a lot of work to make Town Meeting go as smooth as it possibly could. I also wanted to, again, the new Town Hall phone system is up and running.
Oh, I'm sorry. For the Town Meeting, can I just circle back? Being the competitive person, I was driving through Kingston, and I couldn't help but notice that they have yard signs up for their Town Meeting, all over town. And they're very simple, very cheap. But, they say like, October 24th, Town Meeting. Wondering if we could consider doing that. I don't think it would be a heavy lift. We could ask Highway to pop them on some, a few key little islands around town. It would just be another way of alerting people.
I think we could do that.
Okay.
We'd have to make sure we could change the numbers, though.
They very cleverly had, maybe call up to Kingston, see where they got them. But, they had, you could slide the letters in and out on this little yard sign.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we'll reach out to Kingston and see if they got them.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Sorry about that.
Yeah, no, we had 162 people come that night. So, that's fantastic for a October special Town Meeting.
It is, yeah.
So, you know, our efforts with improving communication and getting the word out there is definitely improving, definitely improving. And then, moving on to the new Town Hall, the phone system, it's up and running. There was a training on how to use the phones, how to set up the phones, voicemails, things like that. I think the training went very well. I think people are seeing a big improvement when they call.
What kind of feedback are you getting from the staff on it?
Well, we're not getting complaints. Let's put it that way.
Okay.
So, you know, we haven't received any complaints, as far as I know. I'm sure if they had any little troubles with anything, they could reach out to the IT Director, Steve Mulberg, or Therese, and get it all rectified. And the company that helped us with the phone system is also available for any type of help that anybody can, needs. So, it's a very good system. Very, very happy. And there's hold music, which before, people listened to static. So, again, thank you to Steve Mulberg and Therese Morgan for all of their...
Jordan.
Jordan, I'm sorry, Jordan, for all their work on that. McQuon update. So, Eversource, we were put on a hold because of Eversource, but they were out there. They opened the street up. They capped the gas off from the street to the McQuon. We received a letter today. The letter was forwarded to SMI, saying that here's your letter. So, they now have the National Grid Letter, the Eversource Letter. We confirmed with the Water Department what is required on SMI's part for capping off the water pipe. So, they are well aware of that, and hopefully, we'll start seeing the demolition phase in the next couple of weeks.
Absolutely.
So, moving forward, Treasure Collector vacancy was posted last week. We have it at the Wilmington Express. It's on Indeed, and it will be on the MMA website, webpage, jobs, opportunity webpage in a couple of days. So, that's moving forward. And so, procurement. Right now, I'm the only Massachusetts Certified Public Purchasing Official. We actually, Tony DeFrayis is going to be attending the courses for procurement, offered on a pilot program by the Inspector General's Office. So, they're offering the courses tuition free to a member of the town, which Tony is going to attend. And they're also including a waiver for the Massachusetts Certified Public Purchasing Official, the designation fee. So, he will be attending those courses in November and December. So, you will now have two procurement folks in the building who are attending all the courses and are designated. So, that's a good...
But, just to clarify, you're going to continue to take the lead on that?
I'm still the Chief Procurement Officer for the town, yes. But, we'll have someone else who can assist with procurement, which is a big plus for the town. And again, tuition free, so that's two wins in a row there. We received the draft, finally. We received the draft for the Hanson Personnel Policies. It's 110 pages. So, I received it today. I'm going to be reviewing that starting tomorrow. And then, again, once, this is just the beginning. Once I review it, it will be forwarded to employees for review and feedback. It will be forwarded to Town Council. So, all of those steps will be taken, but at least we've got the draft. So, that's moving forward.
Forwarded.
Yes, yes. So, employees, select board, the department heads, they will all get it to review and provide feedback, and then Town Council gets it.
Now, so, do you provide it to all employees, or to the union stewards?
The stewards.
Okay.
The stewards, yes. Yes. I clarified that. Thank you. So, again, good steps going forward with Personnel Policies, where before, they were all just stuck in a folder and years and years. Town Hall had a special visitor last week. We had a small water snake somehow make its way into Town Hall, right outside the assessor's office. So, you know, I'm making a joke out of it and saying that the snake wanted to discuss with the assessor the assessment for its lakeside abode. But, with the hope of Joe Gumbauskas, Charlie Baker was tied up in another building, but our veterans agent stepped in, scooped up the little critter in a cup, and brought it out and, you know, returned it to its abode out there at the water.
We'll try not to read any symbolism into that.
So, you know, something that we're not used to seeing in Town Hall. And then, we are working to finalize, working with Harperts to finalize the pilot program for the electronic request for leave program. So, there's some small areas that need some finalizing, and so, we're working on that. We have meeting with them tomorrow. So, we're close to getting the program up and running. And just one matter about the bear sighting over Bayberry, I gather, I understand is where it was. Just, you know, don't approach the bear. Call the police immediately.
It was at 557 State Street yesterday at 3:00.
It's been all over the place.
Not even over one of my bean hives.
Oh, I didn't know that.
So, the bears are around.
It was on Whitney Street, Bayberry.
East Washington Street.
Bayberry, yeah.
It was all over.
Yeah, don't approach it.
We keep saying "the bear," but...
It's not, it's not.
Good point.
There were 11 bears being tracked by the wildlife people. Three of them were mothers with cubs. I mean, there are bear in the area, obviously, now, and they're here to stay.
Yeah. So, I could just recommend residents take whatever safeguard measures they need to for their pets and livestock. Never approach it. Call the police and, you know, environmental police. They're in touch with those folks to see if they can track them down somehow.
And I think Chief Mick said that the Mass Division of Wildlife Fisheries had some good information on their website.
Yes. Yes. And that concludes my Town Administrator Report for today.
Okay, fantastic. So, I will entertain a motion to adjourn and enter executive session pursuant to Open Meeting Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the Chair so declares, building litigation discussion. And executive session pursuant to Open Meeting Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A7, to review and approve executive session minutes September 26, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. And that would be a roll call vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We are entering executive session, and we will not be returning to open session.
Can we have a biology break?
And yes, we can have a biology break. Yes.